For coming early. Senator Yamashita, Senator Tyhren, Senator Palacios, Majority Leader Rispio, Senator Tom Ada, Senator Tony Ada. Oh, and Speaker Ben. Good morning. So we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. Welcome, Senator Blas. Buenos, and half a day. This is a good morning. We're four minutes only after 9:00 a.m. Thank you. So this legislature is called to order?
(Inaudible).
I wanted to laugh there, but it is. Thank you very much. I would like to ask Senator Frank Blas Jr. if you can lead us in prayer this morning.
We can all rise. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Dear Lord, as we start this session today and in the season of Advent, we ask for your continued guidance and your continued watch over us and we continue to work your will to be able to help all that entrust in our wisdom, in our deliberations, and in our decisions. We ask this again in the season of Advent in preparation for the arrival of your beloved Son, our Lord Jesus Christ. We ask this in your name. Amen. Amen to the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit.
Thank you very much. Can Senator Palacios lead us in the recitation of Enifresi? For the singing of the tomorrow hymn, Senator Monica Tyhren, you can lead us in that. And for the national anthem, Senator Tony Ada.
(Singing) For no gitamoru, no guta nota, cantai matunanya gitolu iluga. Para iona, para iia, oliva isla senpara. Para iona, para iia, oliva isla senpara. Toilui dempui pa paraita, dan germinanet na bendi shan. Konchari ligu, na fan safuem, juz protegi islan guan. Konchari ligu, na fan safuem, juz protegi islan guan. Oh, see can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you very much, Senator. Can I ask the clerk to please take roll call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthers. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Penglinen. Senator Rispio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyhren. Speaker Wampa. Madam Speaker, there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Your chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I move that we excuse the few senators that are not yet present.
Motion without any objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move that we approve the legislative journal dated 11/20 to the 26/2012, subject to correction.
Hearing objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that they be appended to today's session journal.
Hearing no objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imagalan Guahan, and I move that they be also be appended to today's session journal.
Hearing no objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I move for the same.
No objections ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are no reports of select committees, and so on item 12, I move that the bill numbers 535-31 to 541-31 be given its first reading.
On that motion, objections ordered.
Thank you. I also move that Resolution Number 627-31 through Resolution Number 638-31 also be given its first reading.
Objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, I move that Certificate Numbers 186-31COR to Certificate Number 185-31COR also be given its first reading.
Hearing objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, my first motion is that any resolution or certificate of condolence or commendatory in nature that's introduced for this session period that it be adopted, that all co-sponsors be every single member of this legislature, and that the author work with the legal counsel and the clerk in the preparation of these documents, that they be automatically adopted.
On that motion, without any objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, my next motion, and it's most appropriate that we do it now, is that notwithstanding the objections of Imagalan Guahan with the veto of Bill Number 413-31, an act to repeal and reenact Chapters 1 through 20 of Title III GCA be overridden. And some discussion?
Yes, and the papers.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker and colleagues, for once again allowing me to bring this issue before the body, and hopefully this will be the last time, Madam Speaker, that we'd ever have to have a big question mark as to whether or not the elections being conducted here on Guam are free and fair, and that whether or not every vote that's cast is accounted for accurately, and that whether or not the integrity of the process is preserved as much as we can. And I want to be the first again to acknowledge the Guam Election Commission and all of the work that they've done to bring us close to that point. And Madam Speaker, this bill that's been vetoed by the governor, which he finds very objectionable, really started with this legislature on the beginning of this term, where we passed a bill that mandated them to go through the entire Guam code annotated with respect to elections, to review every single election law, and ask themselves whether or not that law is antiquated, needs to be updated, and they did. They responded in a timely manner, where they presented to us Bill Number 413-31, which outlined every single thing that was necessary in order to have free and fair elections here on Guam. And in the course of that discussion, Madam Speaker, when we were in the committee of the whole, it was the Guam Election Commissioners themselves that acknowledged that several hundreds of provisional ballots were not counted, they acknowledged themselves that absentee ballots were not counted. These are the same absentee ballots that a district court told the Guam Election Commission to count for the federal race that we had in 2010, but they did not think to have those ballots counted for our own local elections. And so in the course of hearing from the Guam Election Commissioners themselves, and in their own willingness to be honest and open about what happened in the 2010 election, they presented to us their subcommittee report that was made of members from both sides of the political aisle, that outlined a whole list of things that went wrong, and one of them included the same thing that the governor finds most objectionable, is the same thing that most of us find necessary to resolve. And that's whether or not those provisional ballots that were not counted because those voters were illegally purged from the voter election listing, and whether or not those absentee ballots, if they were counted, if that would have changed the outcome of the election. And we're not, we're not in no way wanting to change the outcome of any election, Madam Speaker, but just have a audit, not an audit of all of the ballots that were cast, but simply have an audit of those ballots that were summarily dismissed. And after doing the audit, just determine whether or not, whether or not the incumbents received the prerequisite 50% plus one, and whether or not the incumbent has the mandate to serve and to carry out those objectives that he believes in the best interest of the people of Guam. After all, Madam Speaker, we do live in a democracy where every vote should be counted. We do live in a democracy where even the tabulation machines need to be held to the highest standard, and to be, to have such a machine that is auditable, and to have such a process that is auditable, and to have such a bill that should have been received by the administration but instead found objectionable, and we have a transmittal letter saying that the poison pill was mischief. Well, Madam Speaker, I submit to this body that overriding this bill would put an end to the mischief, would put an end to the mischief that we saw in the 2012 election, where we had to have a good colleague of ours go to the Election Commission and ask why he didn't get a single vote in an Aggett precinct, which he believed he should have at least have a couple families there that support him very openly. And so at the time, I issued a press release, and I acknowledged Senator Palacios wanting to have a accounting of that precinct, and I joined him, Madam Speaker. I even was open, and I supported the Guam Election Commission's drive to hand count every single ballot that was cast, if that was what was necessary, to prove that those who made it from number one all the way to number 15 represent the true will of the people of Guam. And I said publicly and in writing that if it changed the outcome of my own election, then so be it. I don't want to ever, ever serve in any capacity under our democratic system of government that questions my legitimacy. And so, Madam Speaker, on April 3rd, 2012, we received a veto message from the administration, from Governor Calvo, saying that while he believes he won, and he believes he'll win again, he's not open to an audit of those provisional ballots and those absentee ballots, and they claim that we're trying to change the rules after the game. Well, Madam Speaker, what we're saying is what's fair is fair, and if the district court judge ordered the Guam Election Commission to count the ballots that were cast for the congressional race, a federal seat, why couldn't they do the same for the local election? And that's what this amounts to, and in order for, in order for anyone to move forward, I believe it's incumbent that we move for the override of this bill. I want to thank my colleagues that have been on board consistently from the very beginning. I want to recognize one of our very own, our good senator from Tumuning, who was very brave enough to join the override in the last session. And I want to recognize every single member, Madam Speaker, of this body, regardless of where they stand on this issue, how difficult it is to stand up for an issue when there's external factors. And those external factors make it very difficult to take a position one way or the other. Even to publicly support this bill has caused a lot of external factors to be put before our members, to be put before me, and created a lot of pressure that's unimaginable. And so I say we continue to stand strong, we continue to stand up, and we continue to say that this override is necessary. So we recognize what happened in the 2010 election. We finally put an end and closure to the 2010 election. We recognize what happened in the 2012 election, and if the 2012 election went without any incident, Madam Speaker, then maybe there wouldn't be cause to want to do the override. Maybe we could have some confidence that the election is held free and fair of any kind of mischief, whether it's, whether it's man-made or whether it's machine-driven. It's just going to put an end so that we don't have a problem like we saw in Aggett, where when our good senator from Orda Chalampago stood up and said that those votes should be counted, he received another 248 votes, I believe, where he didn't receive a single vote. In another precinct in Agania Heights, all of us received 50% more votes. Now, Madam Speaker, if you have that kind of result from that kind of election, do you think people feel confident that, that their vote went to the right person, or that the ones who were certified are truly the ones who should be in office? I say if we had this bill signed at the time, we wouldn't have had that problem we had in the 2012 election, because the Election Commission will be guided statutorily, and their actions will be driven by something that this legislature has agreed to do based on their own input. And so I submit to you and the body that notwithstanding the objections of Imagalan Guahan, that we move forward collectively as a body, and that we override Bill 413-31, and at this time I renew my motion to do so.
On the motion. Senator Elaine Yamashita, you're recognized.
Actually, Madam Speaker, I don't know if this is, I want to talk about the whole.
Yes.
Oh, this is, okay. Madam Speaker, as, when we were last in session, and as I cast my vote, because I do believe that all voices shall count, and I was very concerned about what the previous speaker just described, about how in a certain precinct in Aggett, there was zero, and then it bounced up to 200. That was a great concern with me. Since then, and as of yesterday, of course, you can only imagine the types of conversations in email and letters and comments that have come my way. I do not regret my vote, for sure. I, I know why I did it. But since then, there are several issues that have been raised, and perhaps if the Majority Leader can address some of these issues to clarify. One was that the ballots from 2010 have since been removed from the ballot boxes because we just had an election. And so the issue of integrity of the ballots is in play for some of the folks across the community. How do we know that, that the integrity is in place? A second issue that has been raised with me is the money that would pay for an audit. Knowing that the executive director of the Election Commission had a struggle in actually paying the workers in the 2012 election, I believe they finally got paid, I'm not even sure about that. But I do know that it had had to take some, maybe interviews through the media to actually move that. It strikes me again how powerful the media is, and how important the media is in our work. But I thought about that, and you know, and as we talk about all these fiscal cliffs that we are overlooking at this point, I wonder if indeed we are going to be able to identify the funds that would be required to pay for an audit. And then attached to that, as I've heard repeatedly, the term of non-binding audit, you know, even if we do this, and if we do indeed find that there was not a 51% garnering of the vote, I wonder what really does that mean? And so these are questions, Madam Speaker, that I do, I do raise, and I would hope that there would be deliberation so that we can really fully understand the ramifications of this. I do not doubt that everybody wants every vote to count, but how far or how real? I have learned in my short 14 months, 13 months, that policy into practice, getting a policy passed is one thing, but policy into practice is quite another thing. And I am, I have changed my perspective in how, what, how important is it to get a policy passed if indeed it's not going to result in the outcome? And so I, that's why I raise these issues, and I appreciate the patience if the body believes that there is some, that there is reason to actually address what I am raising, and I do so with the most respect. And I also want to state that in talking with the Election Commission and some of the commissioners, they wholeheartedly appreciate the support. You know, and I know that they were in here for one day, two days, and really with sincerity talked about these reform efforts and how they really do want them to be in place. But repeatedly, a few, including the executive director, has raised the idea of how will we be able to get the audit done if we don't have the budget to get that done? And so I appreciate, Madam Speaker, the opportunity to raise those concerns. Thank you.
Senator, do you yield to the question, or am sure some of her concerns?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I do appreciate the questions of the previous speaker. I want to say that following her vote for the override and her interviews with the media, it motivated me even more. It motivated me even more when the previous speaker publicly said that every vote should be counted, every voice should be heard, and that's why she voted for the override, and she said nothing would ever change her mind, and if she had to vote again, she would. And I'm sure that's probably still where she's at. But in response to her questions, Madam Speaker, her questions are extremely legitimate. And I think that the ballots are still with the Guam Election Commission, they should still be. Certainly, we remember that after the 2010 election, there was a lot of controversy with respect to the, the security company that was tasked to monitor those ballots and to look over those ballots while they were going through this question of whether or not to hand count, or recount, or double count those ballots. And so that in and of itself, from the very beginning, puts a big question and cloud with respect to the process and preserving the process, and those, and the claim that it's going to cost a lot of money to go and count those provisional ballots and count those absentee ballots. I'm not talking about, and this bill nowhere talks about, going through every single ballot that was cast and do a hand count. This bill points out two areas that are problematic in my mind, and it was based on the guidance that we received from the Guam Election Commission members themselves. Remember, Madam Speaker, when they told us, when they told us that in the 2010 election, they purged hundreds of voters from the registers, from the voter election register? And so when the question was asked, well, if you purged them from the voter listing, did you follow up in writing, or did you send them a written notice that you were going to do that, so you give them some opportunity to reregister before that primary general election, and they said they didn't? But then they said, oh, but we're doing that now. So imagine, if you will, you're a registered voter, in your mind's eye, you're, you believe to be a registered voter, you go and you show up and you vote, and you're told you're not on the election, Election Commission's voter registration roster. And so you stand there, because you really want to participate in democracy, you stand there and you say, well, I want a provisional ballot. First of all, how many people are actually aware that they have that option of having a provisional ballot? So they, for those that are aware, they're given a provisional ballot, they vote, those provisional ballots are put into an envelope, and they're set aside. And so the Election Commission will meet in the course of that evening, they'll look through the provisional ballots, they take the same provisional ballot, and they look at the voter registration list, and if the name's not there, they don't count that ballot. Now is that right? Is that right, that they won't count that vote when that voter was illegally purged? And it was the Election Commission members themselves that recognized that the manner in which they purged those voters were wrong. And so the next thing that this bill points out, Madam Speaker, is those absentee ballots that came in because of Yocava, and there was a court decision that required them to count those ballots for the federal race. And so the vice speaker said, did you need a law? Asking the Guam Election Commission members, did you really need something to tell you to count those ballots for the local race? You know, so it's this, it's this complacency, it's this blatant disregard for doing the right thing, and the overreaching goal of every single government in the democracy to make sure that every single vote is cast. But on top of that, there's a whole list of election irregularities that this bill also would take care of. We're not talking about money, because you don't need money to require the Guam Election Commission to make sure that the plate that they print more ballots is accounted for, other than having it there at the printer for 21 days before someone realized it was missing? That you don't need money to tell the Election Commission that they have to account for every single ballot that they bring off island? And we, we've heard confirmed allegations, confirmed that it happened, that there were more ballots printed, they couldn't even reconcile. And so when the question is asked, how much more money is needed, we're going over a fiscal cliff, how much more money is needed to do this audit? And I don't want anybody to misled. It's not an audit of the entire votes that were cast, it's just those two areas that we're looking at. And secondly, following the 2012 election, you saw how both parties were willing to send representatives to the Election Commission to help with the hand counts of those two precincts that were in question. They didn't spend any more money than what was necessary for this election, because representatives of our respective parties went up there and they volunteered their time to make sure that those ballots were properly accounted for. And I submit to you, Madam Speaker, and to my colleagues, that during those discussions, one party suggested that they just run the same ballots through the same machine that's problematic, and if there's a 3% variance, then they'll do a hand count. Whereas the other party said, no, every vote that's cast has to be counted. So given those two scenarios, your vote would decide which party's philosophy you align yourselves more towards, the ones that will say, run the same ballots through the same machines, and if you have a 3% variance, will go the next step? Or the party that says, it doesn't matter, not counting one vote is not counting one vote? And so the argument of would this cost more money, the argument of it being non-binding, it's non-binding. It's non-binding. But if what we're after is the truth, you shouldn't be afraid of going through those ballots, counting them. I think people have a right to know, and over the last year and a half, I think that's been the hallmark of this legislature, and the hallmark of every single member of this body, is to do things that would get us closer to revealing the truth. And, Madam Speaker, this past election, we see what can be done to us, to those of us who stand up for wanting to unearth what really happened, and for those of us who just want to know what happened, finally bring it to closure, and then we can move forward. forward. So I hope that I've been able to answer some of the questions that were raised, and I hope and I pray that that does not change the position that was for those who voted yes, and I hope and I pray that those who didn't vote yes for the override will now
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
vote yes, understanding what this issue is about.
Madam Speaker, now sending the House rules, I move to reconsider the previous actions
It's not about, it's not about politics or partisanship, it's not even about the person.
of this body, the matter of Bill number 409-31, and for it to be placed in the third reading
Someone wants to make it about himself, but it's not about him, it's about the process
file for another vote.
Bill number what?
409-31.
and what we can do finally, as a legislature, using the power of check and balance, recognizing
409. On that motion, no objections?
that a veto was made, but we as a separate but coeval branch of government, through
No discussion, thank you.
our system of government, have an opportunity to override this veto and to right a wrong,
So it's a motion to place it on second reading file, or third reading file, without
and then move forward after that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Senator Yamashita, will he answer your questions? discussion?
You're welcome.
Bill 40? On the motion, notwithstanding the governor's objection, there being none, so then on the motion to send the overwritten Bill 413 to the third reading file, an objection's order. On a motion, Senator? The legislature is back in session. Senator Blasch?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for that break and the opportunity to be able to have a discussion with you and other members of this body. With that, Madam, I'd like to wish to amend my motion, and motions, notwithstanding the House rules, I move to reconsider the previous actions of this body in the matter of Bill number 409-31, and for the bill to be placed in the second reading file.
And is there, on that motion, Senator Ristichio?
So, and the motion then to send Bill 409 down to the third reading, after, because it's on second now-
No, he amended it-
Yes, it's on second reading, you're right. And there's no objections, you're right, so, but, okay, so, all right, then, okay, so it's on-
So, so we're still in motion, so, to further accommodate the previous speaker's desire for an up-and-down vote, now we're saying the House rules, I move that we place Bill 409 from the, which is at the bottom of the second reading file, and place it in the voting file immediately.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, under legislative concurrence, from the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform, on the appointment of Dr. Maria Melinda Sangalan to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners with Senator Rodriguez's committee, to do confirm, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Also, no, and from the Committee on Appropriations, Taxation, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, on the appointment of Mr. Thomas Tanaka Jr. to serve as a member of the Cockpit License Board, with the recommendation to do confirm my move, that that be placed in the voting file.
There are no objections, so ordered.
And also from Speaker Pangolinan's committee, on the appointment of Mr. Elmore A. Cotton to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization, with Speaker Pangolinan's committee's recommendation to do confirm my move, that that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
And so, also from the same committee, on the appointment of Ms. Cynthia V. Ikube to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization, with Speaker Pangolinan's committee's recommendation to do confirm my move, that that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
And also from the Committee on Education and Public Libraries, on the appointment of Ms. Gillette Leonguero to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents, with your committee's recommendation to do confirm, Madam Speaker, I move that that be placed in the voting file.
No objections, so ordered.
My next notwithstanding motion, Madam Speaker, is to suspend discussions on second reading and proceed to the voting file to vote on the override, Bill 409, and all the appointments.
So, so the, right now, there are two bills on the voting file then, which is override, I mean, a vetoed Bill 413, and Bill 409, those are the two bills. Yeah, went down. Okay, so it's in 409. Okay, so the, Senator Rispicio then, so is your motion then, that those, the bills, the two bills that we have in the third reading, then be moved down to the voting file?
Yeah, correct.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. So, we do have two, we have two then bills that's on the voting file. The legislature is back in session. We are on the voting file. And the first bill then will be vetoed Bill 413, so notwithstanding the objections of the governor, on vetoed Bill 413, if I can ask the draft to please, so read the title.
Vetoed Bill number 413-31COR, as amended in the committee of the whole and further amended on the floor, introduced by Dennis G. Rodriguez Jr., Tisiada V. Anthonyada, and others. An act to repeal and reenact chapters 1 through 20 of Title III Guam Code annotated.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
Yes.
Senator Tony Ada?
No.
Senator Blas?
No.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez? Senator Guthertz?
Yes.
Senator Mabini? Senator Munya Barnes?
Oh, yes.
Senator Palacios? Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
Yes.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
No.
Speaker Wampat?
Aye.
Senator Yamashita?
On vetoed Bill 413, and notwithstanding, of course, the governor's objections, the vote received ten nay votes, three nay votes, and two excuse amputations. So, notwithstanding the governor's objection to veto Bill 413, it is hereby overwritten by this body. Thank you. On the, on Bill number 409?
Bill number 409-31COR, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, and further amended on the floor, introduced by F.F. Blas Jr. An act to add a new chapter 17 to Title IX of the Guam Code annotated relative to acts of violence against an unborn child.
Roll call. Senator Tom Ada?
No.
Senator Tony Ada?
Yes.
Senator Blas?
Yes.
Vice Speaker Cruz?
Aye.
Senator Duñez? Senator Guthertz?
No.
Senator Mabini? Senator Munya Barnes? Senator Palacios?
Yes.
Senator Pangolinan?
Yes.
Senator Rispicio?
No.
Senator Rodriguez?
Yes.
Senator Silva Tyron?
Yes.
Speaker Wampat?
No.
Senator Yamashita? Senator Barnes?
Bill number 409-31 received six nay votes, seven nay votes, and there are two excuse amputations. Bill number 409-31 failed to get the required votes to be passed. So, we're back on the second reading file? I'm sorry?
No, where are they?
Oh, I'm sorry, where are they? Okay, wait, where are we? From the, okay, the Committee on Health, okay, the, on the nomination of an appointment of Dr. Maria Melinda Sangalan to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, all in favor, please raise your hand. Senators, we're voting on the confirmation of Senator Guthertz and Senator Palacios, are we voting? Are you voting? Okay, thank you very much. So, Dr. Maria Melinda Sangalan, to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Allied Health Examiners, is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Thomas Tanaka Jr. to serve as a member of the Cockpit License Board, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Thomas Tanaka Jr. is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Mr. Elmore A. Cotton to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization, all in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Elmore A. Cotton, to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization, is duly confirmed by this body. On the appointment of Ms. Cynthia V. Ikube, to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Cynthia V. Ikube, to serve as a member of the Board of Equalization, is duly confirmed by this body. On the confirmation of Ms. Gillette Leonguero to serve as a member of the University of Guam Board of Regents, all in favor, please raise your hand. Ms. Gillette Leonguero is duly confirmed by this body. Senator Rispicio then, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to the second reading file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. The first item on second reading file, Resolution number 198-31, and the chair recognizes Senator Frank Blas Jr.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we place Resolution number 198-31 into the third reading, but I'd like the opportunity to be able to speak on it, please.
If you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, Madam Speaker, Resolution 198-31 is relative to requesting the Commander U.S. Base, U.S. Naval Base Guam to change the name of U.S. Naval Station Guam to reflect the cultural history of Guam by renaming it as the Sumai U.S. Naval Base Guam. You know, Madam Speaker, this is spurt primarily, what had happened was, was, prior to the introduction of this resolution, I was at a ceremony commemorating the, I guess, the liberation of our island. And in one of the discussions that I had with a, an individual from the younger generation, younger than me, was, it struck, it struck me that while we were commemorating and we were talking about how the World War II had started on Guam, this individual who's of local descent asked me, said, "Senator, where's Sumai?" And, you know, Sumai, prior to the start of World War II, was a, was the Mecca, other than the city of Agania, of our island. You know, there were many things that were occurring in Sumai that basically connected Guam to the rest of the world. And made Guam the connection for the rest of the world. You know, they had, you had the Pan American Clippers, you had the coal ships, or the ships that were, that were going trans-Pacific between Asia and the United States that had to make stop on Guam to be able to, to restock their coal, and restock their fuel. You had the commerce that was occurring there. Many of our island's businesses and island's survivability was centered around the, the actions and the activities that was occurring in Sumai. As a matter of fact, it was so significant that when the, our island was invaded on December 8, 1941, the enemy, the eventual enemy and the eventual occupiers of the island, saw the significance and the importance of Sumai, that that's what they bombed and they strayed first. And throughout the war and immediately after the war, the significance in as far as the United States necessity for this area was, was, was important for them to, to, to complete, to finish out the war. And it continues to be important, not just to the national defense, but to the commerce of our, of our island and throughout our region. But lost in all of that was the fact that- But lost in all of that was the fact that that area, prior to it known as U.S. Naval Station Guam, was once Sumai. And what this resolution simply asks for is for the commander, and it's for the United States Navy, to change the name of U.S. Naval Station Guam to reflect the area that it's actually in, so that we don't lose fact of that's where Sumai is at. You know, there are many people, I think you hear the stories. And I find it sometimes almost heartbroken that many of the residents and many of the people who once lived in Sumai and had to, and were, for lack of a better term, removed and placed elsewhere, were placed in the, on the hills overlooking Sumai. I don't know how it feels, and I would never know how it feels for those of that golden generation who probably every morning, when they get their coffee, or every night, when they drink their tea, go out to their back porch or to their, you know, to their front lanai or to their patio, and sip their coffee and drink their tea overlooking an area where they once used to play, roam, love, and resided. And yet for it just to be known as Naval Station. It's important for us so that we can remember and we can continue to recall our island history, not to forget what this area is called. A naval station, as we've seen as a result of BRAC and as a result of realignment, and chances are, and it probably will never happen, but just that slight possibility that if one day the United States forces no longer need U.S. Naval Station, a U.S. Naval Station or a Navy base or a military base can come and go, but Sumai will always be there. And so what this resolution asks for, it simply is a request, that they consider renaming that base to Sumai U.S. Naval Station Guam, U.S. Navy Base Guam, so that we can preserve and we can remember. And so that the generations after us, when they hear of, on December 8, 1941, while people were in mass in honor of Santa Maria and Camelen, when they hear that mass was abruptly halted because there was bombing and there was strafing that was occurring in the village of Sumai, that they remember and they know where Sumai is at. So with that, Madam Speaker, I'm asking my colleagues for, please, for their consideration in support and a vote in favor of this resolution. And I thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
You're welcome. On the motion, Vice Speaker Cruz.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much for allowing me to rise and speak in support of this resolution. I don't usually stand to speak in support of resolutions, but when the good retiring speaker talked about the fact that young people don't know where Sumai is, and I think, I thought about how the two of us were very fortunate this last summer to be in Saipan for the history conference and that very excellent presentation that was done by the National Park Service Ranger who did the presentation on Sumai. And I'm hoping that it'll be put on the Guampedia site soon because it was really, I thought I knew a lot about Sumai, but I was very surprised at the additional facts and information that James provided us in his presentation about Sumai and the importance of Sumai and how large that development was before and after the war and how it was so important that it was heavily mined after, when the Japanese were towards the end of the war to make sure that it didn't regain its importance. And so I rise in support of it. But I'm hoping that at some time in the future, that the people in the school system will invite James to speak at their schools about this presentation that he made to us at the history conference or that it'll be online at Guampedia so that all the people, including, I would dare say, members of this legislature, because I thought I was a, I knew things about history, but I did not know the intricate facts about the importance of Sumai and everything that was going on during that period. And so I think it's important that that part of history be preserved and that we all relish that part of history. And so, thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're very welcome. On the motion? On the motion then to send Resolution 198 to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Bill number 322-31, recognize the author, Senator Frank Blas Jr. Three, oh, I'm sorry, three, oh, I'm looking at 352. I lost. Okay, 322. 352 wasn't at the top of my list, that's why, so, sorry. So, 322, recognize the author, Senator Anthony Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to move 322-31 down to the third reading file. Vote on this motion, please.
And you would like to speak on it?
Yes.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill 322-31 is an act to amend Section 1103.1 and 1103.3 of Chapter 1 of 4GCA relative to exempting certain government vehicles from the logo requirements. And at the public hearing, the representatives from the Department of Youth Affairs and the Department of Public Mental Health and Substance Abuse, and also the Department of Public Health and Social Services, all support, all testified in support of Bill 322-31. Madam Speaker, our policy on government Guam vehicles having a logo is a very good policy. You know, it prevents the practice of abuse of government vehicles, and it makes it easier also to identify the agency by which these vehicles belong to. The concern, however, is that in a few agencies, there is a stigma attached to the services that are provided. And in this case, the logo policy puts a label, not only on the vehicle, but also on the passengers as well. Therefore, it's not only prudent but compassionate, as the agency, the three agencies referenced in the bill, that they be afforded an exemption from the logo policy so that they may be able to better service their clients. Madam Speaker, I kindly ask that I be able to get the support of my colleagues in this measure. Thank you.
On the motion? Senator Palacios, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, of course, I rise in support of the... But I noted here on page 2, on line 4, whether there was an inadvertent omission of the office of the governor, but it says here on the C, Vehicles Transferring the Lieutenant Governor of Guam. And by including that and the omission of the governor, I think that it should be together. And I don't know whether the current law already has covered the governor, but it was inadvertently omitted in the, I guess, in the retyping of this statute. But if the governor is not included currently, then I think that it should fall in the C, Vehicles Transferring the Governor and Lieutenant Governor of Guam. But, you know, because the underlying here are the proposed amendments. So I would assume that this is the current law and that the current law currently does not include the governor, or it was an inadvertent omission. I just want to make sure.
Senator Palacios, of course, on page 1, where it says, "In addition to those vehicles exempted in Section 1103 of Title IV", actually includes the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the speaker, and judges.
Yes, but then, beginning on line 16 on page 1, A, then it starts to itemize it. And it still repeats there, and if that's the case, then I just, it's confusing because if it's already included, why would line 4, second page, on C, it would say Vehicles Transferring the Lieutenant Governor? I just want to make sure that the governor is not omitted or deleted or what. Otherwise, it's a good bill.
Yes, thank you very much for addressing then your concern. On the motion? If anybody else would like to speak first on the motion before I call the author to close? Senator Rispicio, you recognize?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill. I just have one amendment that's beyond a technical amendment in nature, but I need to make it anyway so the body can consider doing this. On page, I guess it's page 2, line 24, lines 24, 25, and 26. I believe there's no need to restate a description of this when on line 5, 6, 7, and 8 of the same page it's included. Also, the sponsor of the bill has a written amendment, and he just asked me to move it, and I have the same thing. So on line 24, you would put, you would put a comma after, you would delete "and", and you would put a comma, and C, and D of this chapter. And then you would strike out "and vehicles" except paratransit, emergency transport vehicles, and all those additional languages. And so I have the floor amendments prepared by the sponsor.
So on that amendment on page 2 then, is to, yes, delete "and", put a comma, and to add "D", and then delete the rest of the underscored words on, which is on 24, 25, 26, and the next page, 1 and 2, A, B, C, and D. On the amendment, without any objections, so ordered. On the motion, any other speakers? Then Senator Ada, would you like to close? Or Senator, on the motion then to send Bill 322-31 to the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Thank you, Senator. Bill number 352-31, Senator Blas, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we place Bill 352-31-COR in the third reading file, but I'd also like the opportunity to speak on it, please.
You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 352-31 actually is the first of seven bills. Nine? No, seven, right. Two, eight, eight.
Oh, but nine's for...
D I math.
Okay. Eight, eight for this, for this series.
It's the first of eight bills. That actually address, and this is as a result of, you know, changes in the statute, which I think is a very good one, and in compliance and in performance with the rules and statutes, to be able to separate and address each lot individually in individual pieces of legislation. But what 352 and succeeding up to Bills 359 would basically provide, is an opportunity to rezone a property that's located in the municipality of Dededo. But for the purposes of my colleagues, I've been able to provide you a map, both, a map and a photograph of the area that is being considered. This area is property owned by the family across from the Niktams facility in Finagayan. And the photograph, if you were to look at it, is, you know, it gives you an aerial shot as to what we're talking about. Is to change the zone from single and multiple family dwellings to commercial zones. This is as a result of families coming to my office and requesting for assistance and being able to rezone this for the purposes of the family wanting, believing that this, giving them the, those, these lots, commercial zone designation would be the best use of the properties. You know, Madam Speaker, this, these bills, and this bill in particular, was introduced a little over a year ago, and again, so that we can comply with all the new standards necessary that are in place with the checks from the various agencies in Department of Land Management and then whatnot. They passed that muster. It was, I want to thank the chairman of the good committee who has oversight over these rezonings. He and his office and the committee for their diligence in being able to ensure that it now passes the new standards necessary for it to be considered by this body. And so therefore, I'm asking for the body's consideration and in support of this Bill 352-31.
On the motion? Can we take a brief recess, one moment?
Yeah, that's your call.
Senator Frank Blas, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, thank you for the opportunity to be able to work with legal counsel and language that would help to address some of the concerns, and rightly so. That was brought up by the mayor of Dedero. And because of the obvious, that this property does exist in the immediate vicinity of Finnegan Elementary School. And first, I want to speak of the amendment, and then I'll speak of the process, again, to reiterate the process that was utilized to be able to ensure, I mean, to bring this piece of legislation to the floor. And this, the amendment that I'm proposing is to be placed in the last line, you know, starting on line fourteen. And Madam Speaker, for purposes of, because, again, Bill 352-31 is the first of eight bills up to 359. This language I'm proposing to be included in the last line of each of those bills. And it says, except that in light of the school and bus stop in the area, the property should not be used for a bar, nightclub, or strip joint without approval of the Guam Land Use Commission.
On the amendment, and the amendment is that this language, with the exception, of course, at the bottom of each bill, which is Bill 352 to 359 for legal counsel, to make sure that that language, that amendment, is actually placed in all the bills.
And just to, Madam Speaker, this is not, this doesn't set any new precedents with regards to the concerns that were brought to the legislature. This is basically a conditional approval process. And then it also has, again, it's not saying that that is setting, it has to go through another whole process with the Guam Land Use Commission. And it's said there that if you're going to change it, and you're going to use it, in fact, for these, for as a bar, nightclub, or strip joint, that you're going to have to go to Guam Land Use Commission before that can occur. So there's another process that they're going to have to go through if, in fact, this is the conditions that they're going to, or this is the reason why they're going to be using this, or resorting it to commercial. And so I'm just going to speak to that with regards to the conditions that are going to be placed in as far as this.
On the motion, on that amendment.
Madam Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker. On the amendment offered by Senator Blas, I just wanted to ask, maybe ask him a question of a possible amendment to the amendment. Because there are existing legislations right now where if there are schools within, I think it's two hundred feet away, then, of course, there's a bus stop, that certain types of business activity should not be there. And in this case, I know we're specifically talking about a bar, a nightclub, or a strip joint where alcohol is being served. And, but there is one other that this legislature, or even public health, has not made any specific decision or definition of. And I don't know how we're going to do this, but there's the issue of certain massage parlors that are in question. And that's why I wanted to ask the author of this amendment whether that's something that he may support, or would object to actually having that kind of business in the proximity, close proximity to schools.
You know, and I'll yield to that, Mr. Vice Speaker. And quite honestly, I really don't have any objection to that. The concern that I have, though, is that truly, we haven't defined. I mean, we know what a strip joint is, we know what a bar is, okay? But I think that we all know, you know, basically, street talk, what we talk when we say massage parlor. But I think even this legislature, this body, has had difficulties over the years in trying to figure out the right nomenclature, the right wording, the right definition, on being able to identify what these are. Clearly, we don't want anything that is illegal, clearly. So I agree, while I agree with the speaker with regards to, we don't want that kind of activity, but are we using the proper language? Are we then going to use that, and we're going to restrict them from, let's say, an individual who has a legitimate therapeutic massage venture or business? But because it says massage, it's illegal, or it's not permitted. So while I agree, I don't know whether that's the right language to be used. And, you know, it's, I don't want to say it's overstating the obvious. I, but again, like I said, I agree, but I just got to be very careful with the kind of language that we use there. Because I don't want to further restrict it for something that does have value, does have meaning, does have purpose, is morally accepted, is medically accepted, therapeutically accepted. But we've restricted it because we've used that language. Well, I'm not going there.
Is that sufficient to you? Does that address your concern?
Yes, it is. I think the, and he's right, and as I stated earlier, this legislature has not defined it. We have had other bills actually that talks about the signage of some of these massage parlors. And we wanted to make sure that they are reputable massage parlors, and that they are therapeutic massage parlors. And I know there is that whole argument on it. But I think it might, it'll be sufficient, the mere fact, of course, that we're discussing this, and it's going to be part of our journal. So that whenever there is any kind of question in the future, in terms of what type of businesses then will start popping up in areas such as this, near schools, that there will be this consideration then when they do go to get a license. I'm hoping that rev and tax will be on top of this to make sure that they scrutinize some of these businesses that are going to be taking place there. So, I mean, I know my colleague, I think here, had discussed with me another language. So I would just, I would yield to her, and then I would want to come back and just continue on with my discussion.
I'm not posing an objection to it, and I agree with it. But along the same lines, and I think that there's also, it's, well, it doesn't restrict it. It says that if you're going to do it, it has to go through another process. So I think that's the, you know, that's the saving grace, for lack of a better term, with regards to this. Is that there is a whole, you know, that if you are in fact going to put a business such as that, going to be there, it's going to have to go through a whole process. But as the retired speaker stated, there, you know, one of our colleagues is going to propose a language that will probably suffice, so I'll wait for that.
Thank you very much. Senator Guthard, and then Senator Yama Sheed, did I see your hand go up? No, okay. Senator Guthard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Miss Speaker. I think the dilemma being presented by our speaker is that she's concerned as to whether or not some businesses, such as massage parlors, are really massage parlors. Or do they provide other services that, under Guam law, in fact, would be considered illegal? And I think what we could do is simply amend the language to say that any businesses that prescribe, that are, that involve the sex trade, are prohibited. Are prohibited from the vicinity of the schools, et cetera, et cetera. I know it is, but you want to emphasize that in the bill. You want to emphasize the sex trade. Any business that may be involved illegally in the sex trade is prohibited. Well, there's nothing to stop it from being reiterated, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we'll take a short break.
Take the long break.
Families first, we have to protect our children. So, Mr. Speaker, I think it's important that the discussion actually, you know, take place to set the position of this body. And I don't think anyone is arguing that, but whether we should put it here or not is another matter altogether. So, yes, I do support, you know, the amendment, so.
Thank you. Any other senator wish to be heard on the bill? On, on the amendment? Any, no objections, or? Senator Blas, on the, on the main bill? On the main bill, Madam Speaker?
On the main bill? Go ahead, and then I'll close it.
Thank you very much, again, Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, when it comes to land zoning, you know that, yes, the legislature has that authority to do just that. We also know is that we've created a department that, you know, to provide a process in which, you know, anyone should be able to go to. Unfortunately, we're hearing, and we're getting a lot of requests because of several things that land management has failed to do. One, of course, is that the process is just too long, and sometimes maybe expensive. The second is that whether they like it or not, then they're choosing to either implement some, and maybe not even implement, you know, another. There is a bill that was, became law, and it's a good law. Because then it, because we're also trying to make sure is that the process is being followed, at least to the extent where this body can read the report, understand where these departments and agencies that are critical in providing any comments for, especially when you're dealing with zoning, rezoning, to something above family, I mean, above, of course, agriculture, but more importantly, for commercial or industrial zoning. There is a requirement by law, and it says, and I'd like to read that particular section of 2 GCA, Chapter Two, Section 2110, Land Zoning Consideration Reports Required for Land Zoning Legislations. That any bill that seeks to designate a particular zoning for any real property shall not be placed on a legislative session agenda until a land zoning consideration report has been issued by the Department of Land Management. And that, which means just that, we can't put it on the agenda until such time that that's been done. And in this particular case, and you know where, what my position has been all the time about rezoning. But when there is a failure on the part of departments and agencies that are required by law to then provide input, to best guide this body in making a decision, then, you know, it's just unconscionable. This bill, and I know that the author could speak to this, but he has introduced this bill some time ago, because here we are at over five hundred bills, and this was, is Bill 352. So this is, has been on the books for some time. It has, of course, been in committee, awaiting, and I say awaiting, reports from the different departments and agencies. And I've gone through the committee report to look for them, and only to find that there's only one response that actually came from GWA indicating that all of these properties basically have the infrastructure for water and the size of each one of these pipes. So I don't think, of course, that this body should be held hostage in terms of passing legislations or placing bills on the agenda when the department has failed to meet the deadline. So, and then by law, and I'm going to read again a section, that says that should the department fail to meet the deadlines imposed in this section, the requirement stipulated in this section for the land zoning consideration report shall be waived. This waiver does not prohibit the department from issuing a report at any time past their deadline. But, you know, enough is enough, and I understand, you know, that we need to move on in this process. And maybe now, as a, I know the chairman is not here, but I think a motion then should be considered, based now on the law, that this land zoning consideration report then shall be waived. And I think that that's a motion that is now appropriate, based on the law, and, you know, the consideration of placing this bill on the agenda.
The chair will note that the bill was introduced in October 2011, which is fourteen months ago.
Yes.
We will find from the chair that that has been waived, fourteen months having passed.
Yes. Thank you very much, Mr. Speaker.
Speaker, can I ask that be also for the bills, so we don't have the same discussion through Bill 359?
That waiver will apply through 358. Thank you, Senator Blas. On the motion to place the bill in the third reading, into the third reading file for voting today, any objection?
Senator Blas, you still have the floor then for Bill 353-31?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, on the matter of Bill 353-31 COR, I move that this bill be placed in the third reading. And it's with regards to the discussion, Madam Speaker, for the purposes of, you know, this is the same discussion that we had with Bill 352. And there was a previous And there was a previous motion that was made, that the amendment that was made in 352 also be amended and to Bill 353, and that also the consideration and the ruling from the, from the chair with regards to the waiver also apply to this.
So, on that same, again, amendment that was used for 352, that is also applicable for 353?
Right.
Without any objections, so ordered. Bill, and on the motion then to send 353 to the third reading without any objections, so ordered. Bill 354?
And actually, Madam Speaker, if I can make a notwithstanding motion, these three bills, 354 to 359 inclusive, are all basically, again, properties that are adjacent, and again, as I, as previously spoken on 352, these bills, 352, 359, were all bills, you know, addressing properties that are all adjacent to each other. They all have the same issues, they're all the same concerns, the same requests, the same amendments, the same, you know, ruling from the chair. So, an outstanding is for the body to consider that, to place Bills 354 to 359 into the third reading.
Remember, it's all now lump sum, 354 to 359.
354-31, 355-31, 356-31, 357-31, 358-31, and 359-31.
On that motion? No objections? So ordered.
Thank you. I love these top standing issues.
No more?
No more.
Bill 3, I mean, 473-31, recognize the primary author, Senator Tom Adam.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill 473-31, the version which is as substituted by the Committee on Utilities, Transportation, Public Works, and Veterans Affairs, and as further substituted by the Committee on Rules, down to third reading, and I'd like to discuss it, please.
May proceed.
Madam Speaker, Bill 473 does two things, which will help the Mass Transit Authority to be able to overcome certain obstacles which they are facing with right now. Right now, according to the law, if they are going to go in there to make a change to the fare, the bus schedule, the bus route, they have to take that process through the administrative adjudication process, which requires then that the agency conduct a public hearing and duly notice that public hearing, and then gather, of course, the findings from those hearings, submit it to the board, and for, for its action, and then after that, submit it to the governor's office, and after the governor's office has disposed of it, it then gets sent down to the legislature, and the legislature then would take the final action on whether to change a fare schedule from $1.10 to $1.20, for example. That whole process could take up to, could take up to as long as 120 days at least. And so, really, the, the Mass Transit Authority needs a little bit, needs more flexibility to be able to, to make changes as necessary. And of course, these changes are not going to happen every day. So, what the bill proposes to do is that they're still really going to have to go through the process of, you know, duly noticing a public hearing, conduct public hearings in three locations, one in the north, central, south, of the changes that they're going to make, and, and then submit it to the board for their disposition, and then once the board decides on it, then that's it. They can implement the change if it is approved. So, that's one, that's one objective of Bill 473. The second objective of Bill 473 is that, you know, for the past, since it got established as an autonomous agency about three and a half years ago, the, the authority has not been able to hire a general manager, partly because the requirements require that the general manager must have at least 10 years of experience managing transportation activity such as the mass transit over the past 10 years. And they just haven't been able to find anyone on island to be able to meet that qualifications. They've had to go off island to look for candidates, but the candidates over there, just basically for the amount of money that's being offered, basically aren't even interested. So, what Bill 473 does is it really tries to make the qualification requirements a bit more realistic, and basically now requires that the candidate have a, has to have a combined six years of operational supervisory and management experience in a activity that provides transportation services similar to the Mass Transit Authority. I think that that is more realistic. And then on top of that, of course, you know, the major part of the operation is really outsourced to another company, so I'm not sure that we really need the, the previous qualifications that was initially set. So, that, Madam Speaker, is really the, the gist of what Bill 473 proposes to do. However, I do have some amendments, just, just three simple amendments that I would like to proffer to kind of tighten up the bill somewhat, and I will ask the pages to distribute these, please. We can start with a very simple, while they are being passed out. On page three, on page three, line 25 there regarding board approval. Right now, the way the bill is written is that after the public notice, after the public hearings have been conducted, then the staff will then submit their findings to the board, and the board can either approve, disapprove, or amend. And the amendment that I'm proposing is that when it gets submitted to the board, the board will either approve or disapprove the change that's being proposed. It's very simple. So, then the amendment then should read on line 25, "The board shall approve or disapprove the proposed changes," and delete the word "and/or amend."
On the amendment to delete "and/or amend," and just you'll read, "The board shall approve or disapprove the proposed changes." No objections? So ordered.
The other amendment, Madam Speaker, is on page three still, on line 20, and again, this is more of a technical amendment, and it is to insert the word on line 20, the word telephone. So, "All notices shall include the following: the GRTA point of contact name, telephone number, and email." So, it just to clarify that the number we are speaking of is a telephone.
On the amendment, no objections? So ordered.
And finally, Madam Speaker, on page three again, regarding the noticing, if you read there on, starting on line 26 on page two, it talks about the public hearing notice, and that the GRTA shall hold at least three public hearings on proposed changes. And the amendment that I would like to make is that these public hearings must be held at least 30 days prior to the notice date of the proposed changes. So, in other words, we're going to put out a notice, we're going to put out a notice at least 30 days, and that gives everybody a heads up that, you know, in the next 30 days, you may have to rearrange your, your works, your, your work schedule, or whatever other schedule you have, which relies on the availability of the mass transit. So, the amendment then is, is as shown there in the amendment sheet. So, you'll read then, "The GRTA shall hold at least three public hearings on proposed changes at least 30 days prior, prior to the date, prior, I'm sorry, prior to the, that should be instead of notice date, prior to the effective date of the proposed changes."
I'm sorry, Senator, can you read that again?
Okay, so then the, the last amendment here is, it would read, "The GRTA shall hold at least three public hearings on proposed changes at least 30 days prior to the effective date of the proposed changes."
So, it's to add the word "effective" before "noticed"?
No. Replace the word "notice" with the word "effective."
Oh, okay. So, it's, all right, to "effective" date. Okay, on, on the amendment, does everybody have a copy? And you saw the, the changes? So, to change "noticed" to "effective," that's the very first one, no objections, so ordered. And then the amendment itself, any objections? No objections, so ordered. Okay, Senator, is there any other amendments? You still have the floor?
None, Madam Speaker, and so I just ask my colleagues to, to favorably consider the bill so that we can assist the mass transit in being able to handle the affairs of the authority more effectively. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, on the amendment, on the motion then to send 473-31 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Amended Bill Number 507, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, may I beg the indulgence of the body and ask this be placed first thing in the morning and pass it? This is a fairly hefty bill, and it's about 11:30, and if you want to address other bills that would be shorted, this, this could take almost all day.
So, we, so we would then set this aside, and then first thing tomorrow morning, then we would?
Correct.
We would go to Bill 507. No objections? 507, first thing tomorrow? Well, why?
I think we can discuss that at late.
Yeah, tomorrow morning.
But I'd just like for us to at least.
Okay, no, I, so.
And the committee report is online. For those of you that did not attend the public hearings, in plural, the committee report is almost a verbatim transcript of all of the hearings, so I ask everybody to please take the time to review the committee report so that when we, when we do discuss this tomorrow, everybody will understand where and why the amendments are going to be proposed, or why the actions are going to be taken. Thank you.
So, on that request then, is that Bill 5, 507 then be set aside, and that it be the first bill tomorrow morning when we go into session? No objections? So ordered. We will continue on to substitute Bill Number 511, recognize the author, Senator Yamashita.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I ask that Bill Number 511-31 be moved to third reading file, and I'd be asked, I ask to be given the opportunity to discuss it.
May proceed, Senator.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, Bill Number 511-31 COR, as substituted by the Committee on Health and Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform, is an act to amend various sections to update the Adult Protective Service mandates. Madam Speaker, as we all know, as we pay attention to the families and the overall community that we all serve, we know that our population has increased. Our latest census says that we're up to 159,358 people. Those are civilians outside of the fences. We also know that there are about 11,000 of us who are 65 and older, and that we're living longer. We're living about two years longer than we were 10 years ago. And we also know that our family sizes are getting smaller. Some of us have parents who are one of 20, 10, 7 members, and today more of us are having families with one or two kids. The whole fashion, the whole fabric of our families is, is changing. And with that, as our society is, is changing, so are particular dynamics. And it is with sadness that we address the fact that our manomko, that our senior citizens, are being treated in certain ways that I believe Guam would never think we would have to address. Previously, the Honorable Senator Elizabeth Areola had introduced legislation with others, with other senators, with other leadership, that identified the need to actually create the unit of adult protective services at Public Health Social Services. And then fast wind to decades later, where now we're seeing that we don't only need a unit, but we now perhaps could better support our seniors, our manomko, and their children through a bureau of adult protective services. With that in mind, the Public Health Social Services leadership and I have been meeting since April, April 12, 2012, we started work group meetings, and we have met 14 times. And I would actually like to read the stakeholder groups who have been meeting every Friday for $2 to $3. They are the Community Leadership Partners, our CAFIC Social Services, Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse, the Guam Coalition Against Sexual Assault and Family Violence, Guam Fire Department, Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, Guam Legal Service Corporation Disability Law Center, Guam Medical Transport, Guam Memorial Hospital, Guam Mommy Incorporated, the Mayor's Council of Guam, the Office of the Attorney General, the Office of the Public Guardian, which I want to say, it was through the leadership of the Public Guardian that a lot of the issues were actually raised and brought to my attention, and St. Joseph's Medical Transport, as a, a group that actually transports a lot of our manomko to and from appointments. It was through these voices that they said, "We have a serious problem." Every year, for the past one, two, three, four, five, six years, we have seen an increase in our senior citizens who are being abused. The areas of abuse are varied, but for the last few years, the top, the highest abuse category, in 2007 was in the physical realm, where we're physically abusing our seniors. 2008 was in neglect, we're just not paying attention to them. In 2009 was the material and financial aspect, where sadly, families are using financial resources of their seniors, of their manomko, and leaving them. 2010, it was again a material financial. Last year was neglect, and in this current year, the highest rate is in the material financial components. What Bill Number 511-31 attempts to do, Madam Speaker, is it attempts to update the current statutes, and some of them are real basic and foundational, such as instead of calling people with disabilities handicapped? I'd be honored, Madam Speaker. Thank you. Instead of calling our people handicapped, we are, we will update that terminology to people with disabilities. So, throughout this statute, wherever it says elderly, elderly or adults with, who are handicapped, that will be changed to elderly or adults with a disability. So, that is really foundational, but for those of us who are disabled, that is profound. That is respect. That is acknowledging that the way we're spoken with, the way we are addressed matters. It matters how you refer to us, how you treat us, how you call us. A lot of the language really isn't changed, except for, again, that it goes from a unit to bureau. On page six of the bill, serious abuse, that definition is updated, and it talks about what that actually means. Other than Ms. Sontis, who was at our meetings faithfully, was the Attorney General, and that was specifically Phil Tidinko, who was at all the meetings, and they- that was specifically Phil Tidinko, who was at all the meetings, and they together guided everybody else at the table about the language, about the legal jargon, and what would help take everybody through justice and address the particular issues. The other aspect of this that has been changed is the idea that what we now do for our children who go through Child or Children Protective Services, we will now address our manomko with. And that was a real serious profound change in how we look at this. Because what this bill proffers is that when anybody sees somebody who, an older person who might be mistreated or neglected, that person needs to call it in. That person shall call Adult Protective Services, and Adult Protective Services shall do some sort of investigation within 24 hours. And the Attorney General repeatedly said, you know, "This is something that we really need to think about," because this is making a serious statement, in that we are acknowledging that we have a problem. We are acknowledging that we are abusing our seniors. We are at a point on our island that we are acknowledging that the issue of disrespect is paramount. And as we talked about this over and over again, I said to the, I shared with the people around the table, "That truly is what we're acknowledging, and we should, and we must. We have to help our seniors who are in need of this kind of assistance. We must and we shall strengthen the arm of Public Health Social Services of Guan Legal, of the Office of the Guardian, Office Guardian, Public Guardian, I'm sorry, strengthen what their supports and services, and have them change to address the needs of our changing landscape across our island." This is our reality. And while I will one more time suggest that only until we strengthen early childhood education will we actually really change what's going on later on in life. But that is for another conversation and for another bill, and so I will save that conversation. So throughout this bill, it talks about, and these were all recommended by Adult Protective Services, and again, the Office of the Public Guardian, and the Attorney General, and Catholic Social Services, the consequences of failure to report, talks about who shall be a part of Bureau of Adult Protective Services. It talks about a big change in that it includes financial institutions. Because we were made to understand that it's through the banking and the finance institutions where they actually see that something is amiss. Ms. Sontas has shared with us many cases where it's through her review of bank accounts, where she sees that the resources somehow are simply dwindling or escaping. And it's through her further conversation that they find out that there is mistreatment. And then she moves in to try to resolve, mitigate that unfortunate situation. Madam Speaker, it is with a heavy heart that I proffer this bill, but it is also with a heart of hope. A heart of hope that leadership of today will say, "We will take care of those of us who are living longer, and those of us who might need a helping hand." It is with a hopeful heart that I say, "It's not only our children who are in need, but it is our growing families who are in need." And so this is an unfortunate statement to make, but it is a right statement to make, that it updates and strengthens Adult Protective Services, it gives them the kinds of resources that they might need to better provide the kind of support for our growing, our aging families. And this is nothing but a stepping stone, because we have all acknowledged through our 14 meetings in the last four months, that more and more needs to be done through transportation, through family housing, through leisure, through medical supports and services, that we need to continue the roundtable conversations and continue to address what needs to be done to strengthen, to ensure that as we live longer, that our manomko are provided a quality of life, as they live through the sunset, as we thank them for all that they've done to help make Guam what it is today. I look forward to the deliberation of my colleagues, and Madam Speaker, I thank you for the opportunity to actually present this. Thank you.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, recognize the Vice Speaker.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I rise in support, full support of this bill, and I also rise to commend the retiring Speaker for her diligent effort over the last several months to get everybody that's involved in this area to assist in rewriting and amending this legislation. As the former family court judge, I saw the very beginnings of this problem, and it wasn't until recently that I realized the depth of the problem that we were now and are experiencing with our manomko. And I commend the sponsor for her work in this area, and to make sure that we do take care of our manomko. And we will have a further discussion about some of the other beginning problems in this area, but it is, it's shameful, the kinds of suffering, both physical, emotional, financial, that our manomko are forced to endure. And I really hope that this legislation, as she says, is going to be the first step, because Adult Protective Services needs to be strengthened. The Office of the Public Guardian needs additional assistance. The Attorney General needs some help in making sure that we address this issue. But it is shameful that we have this problem, but it does no good for us to stick our heads in the sand and say it's not happening. It's imperative that we stand up and admit that it is happening, and try as leaders to address this. And I, again, commend the sponsor for her work in this area, and stand in full support of this legislation. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Mr. Vice Speaker. On the motion, I recognize Senator Palacios.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, but I rise in support of this bill, even at the risk of being challenged for conflict of interest. At the same time, of course, this, at the same time, this is very similar to Bill 417, which of course is on the agenda, but this definitely is a need to upgrade and to increase the services and the protection of persons with disabilities and the elderly. Many, many articles have pointed out that they have become victims of deceit, abuses, and other kinds of cheatings, and I believe that this bill will address those issues. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, are there any other speakers? Senator, would you like to close?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, and I thank the previous speakers for the support and for acknowledging that with heavy hearts, we have hopeful hearts. And it's that kind of leadership, the leadership of the 31st Guan Legislature, Madam Speaker, that really does understand what families are going through, and is going step by step to addressing what can make things even better for all of us. Madam Speaker, I have a technical amendment on page six, line 11, a substantial risk of death, not or death, that was of death, instead of or. I thank legal counsel.
On that amendment, objections, so ordered.
And Madam Speaker, I would be honored if you would be my second co-sponsor, and if Vice Speaker Cruz would be my third.
Thank you very much. On that, without any objections, so ordered.
And I ask that it be placed on the voting file.
On the motion to place Bill 511 on the voting file, in the third reading file, without any objections, so ordered. Senator Respechio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we reorder the second reading file to bring up Bills 534 and Bill 541 at the top of the agenda.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. So, Senator Respechio, you recognize Bill 534.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and colleagues. Madam Speaker, Bill 534 and 54, first I move to place Bill 534 on the voting file with some brief discussion.
On the third reading?
On the third reading file.
534, you may continue.
Madam Speaker, Bill 534 has been introduced with the support of the Department of Land Management, and it's to rezone property that is under the purview and custody of the Chumor Land Trust Commission, and it's situated in the municipality of Dedido. And it's that property that's right across the Harmon Flea Market, where they have a restaurant there and a warehouse there. And unfortunately, when the license, the individual who holds license to this property from the Chumor Land Trust Commission, when he went to get a building occupancy permit, he was told that he cannot, because the property is still zoned agricultural, and that he would have to get some kind of zoning necessary, either through the Department of Land Management or through the Guam Legislature. And so this bill provides that recourse for him to be able to do that. And so I move that Bill 534 be placed on the third reading file, and I ask our colleagues to please support it. The first motion I want to make is to authorize the legal counsel to provide for that waiver that's consistent with what we did for Items 3 all the way to Item 10 on the second reading file. So that's Dedido Flea Market.
On the motion? Is there anyone who would like to speak on it? There being none, so on the motion then to send 534 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. And 534, and then, no, now we're going 541?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to place Bill 541 to the third reading file. In some very brief discussion, my first motion again is to provide for the waiver that we did, also further did in Bill 534.
On that amendment, without any objections, so ordered.
And as explained earlier, Bill 544, Bill 541, rather, is companion legislation to Bill 534. We had to break it up so that each bill recognizes each law that's pursuant to the law and pursuant to our rules.
On the motion to send 541 to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Senator.
Madam Speaker, in the interest of moving our agenda along, I move that we take, we reorder the second reading file, notwithstanding the House rules, to bring Bill 529 to the top of the second reading file.
Can you say the number again?
Bill 529.
529. Okay. On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. So Bill 529, the author is Senator Palacios, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that Bill 529-31, as amended by the Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, be placed on the third reading file for purpose of discussion and eventual voting. If I may give an overview?
You may proceed.
Madam Speaker, May of this year, Public Law 31-211 will actually authorize the Chief of Police to employ qualified civilian police reserve officers to fill in for regular police officers who are on military deployment, and those regular officers who are on very long-term sick leave and disabilities. At that time, during the hearing, Madam Speaker, the threshold to qualify, to be utilized as a part-time employee is 2,080 hours, which is the equivalent of a full-time, one-year full-time regular employee of the government of Guam. Although the reservation showed of objection by GPD at that time, that they recommended the 500-hour threshold, we went ahead and we was able to convince the body to adopt the 2,080, which was passed. But during the hearing, I indicated that we'll try it for six months and we'll see, based on the statistics and experiments, whether you have difficulty recruiting. Madam Speaker, it's not so much that there's no one who did not fill the 2,080 hours, in fact, there are many that fill more than 2,000, but these are people that have a regular full-time job elsewhere, so they are not available to fill in on a regular basis for officers who are on military deployment. And so, the bill proposes, and it has only one single purpose, and that is to amend, instead of the 2,080 hours, to amend that to 500 hours. And 500 hours, Madam Speaker, is almost the exact number that internally within the Guam Police Department is 492 hours. The reserve voluntary reserve officers went through rigorous training, almost little bit half the time of a regular police officer. And then they go on a ride-along program, and then the, I think, a two-man patrol. And once they complete 500 hours of voluntary time, then they're allowed to patrol solo and do regular police work. And that's why they have, the 500-hour minimum is proven to be satisfactory to GPD. So by adjusting from 2,080 hours to 500 hours, it widened the pool of choices and of available people from which the police, Chief of Police can, I guess, can utilize these people. So that is the only change. All the other remain intact, except that one other item I added, which was during the course of review of this amendment. It was noted during the market meeting with DOA and the Guam Police Department, and on page three, line 18, the amendment there is that, "The Department of Administration, in consultation with the Guam Police Department, shall establish a policy for processing, for processing compensation for the reserve officers who are employed under this act." The current law does not have this kind of provision. Right now, they're amended that they have to come together and see how to process this to pay them, and they are now finalizing that internal procedure between DOA and GPD. And it would be much like a casual employee, I guess, with the Port Authority of Guam and other government employment on a temporary status. So again, the gist of this bill, Madam Speaker, is to adjust the 2,080 hours to 500 hours, at the request and as practiced by the Guam Police Department. And I move that this bill, of course, be moved on to the third reading file. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
You're welcome, Senator. On the motion, 529 to be sent to the third reading file without any objections, so ordered. Senator Respechio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move to reorder the second reading file to place Bill 538 at the top of that second reading file.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered. So the author for 538, Senator Munia Barns, you're recognized.
Madam Speaker, I moved that Bill 538-31-COR is substituted by the author, be put on the third reading. I know that the committee, the substituted committee report was being circulated, so does everybody have a copy?
No, I don't have to substitute it.
If you just take a 10-second recess, I'll be right back. Okay. Madam Speaker, this Bill 538-31-COR is an act to approve the terms and the conditions of the Guam Economic Development Authority Project Revenue Bonds to finance the Ironwood Lada Seniors Village Affordable Multi-Family Rental Housing Development, to amend Public Law 30-172 relative to the Lada Estates project, ensuring development of project for affordable housing for the people of Guam, to amend Public Law 31-195 relative to affordable homes, and to authorize the tax credits and legal payment for the off-site infrastructure working, work servicing the Lada Estates affordable homes. Madam Speaker, as you know, that the project called Lada Estates has been in the works with this government for over 23 years. It was the intent of the government to build affordable homes for our working-class families, to provide for senior citizen homes, but also to provide for rental units for those who could not afford a home but really wanted a better quality of life for their families to stay in. Madam Speaker, as you know, that this battle went, this project went through a lot of obstacles, and through the obstacles, it had to... and through the obstacles, it had to go through court. After 23 years of hardship, going through, I always say, we went through four congressional representatives, 11 legislatures, four governor administrations, we're finally going to close the chapter on Lada, and making sure that almost 300, 400 homes will be built, not just for our working-class families, but also for our senior citizens, and those, again, like I said earlier, who cannot afford to have their own home, but to have a better living quality of life for rental units and developments to be included into this project. The first portion of the bill talks about the private activity bond and GIDA sharing with the proposer of the developer of the project to go and get these bonds in order to effectuate the project moving forward. But Madam Speaker, as GIDA does the nuts and bolts of doing the packaging for additional grant funding, it has to come back to the legislature for approval. The vendor did apply for this tax credit, but in order for it to move forward, this is the mechanism to okay the project, so GIDA can continue to move forward. The vendor in this project is, the developer in this project is the only one who applied for this kind of activity, and in order for, again, for us to proceed, it needs to go through this avenue. The second portion of the bill talks about what the government is still liable for, and how the tax credit could be utilized instead of paying actual cash from the government. Guam Housing has spoke about it, GIDA, they're eager to work with the developer on this. We want to literally close the chapter, Madam Speaker, on this, on this Lada project, and we hope that once this project is completed, that our families here on Guam can truly realize their Guamanian dream of providing a good home for their families. Madam Speaker, I hope that my colleagues support me in this effort. I'd ask a motion be placed right now, that you be second co-sponsor on this legislation, Madam Speaker, and Senator Rory Rispichio be third co-sponsor, as they too have worked closely with me. You folks have worked closely with me in making sure that we truly realize this project for, for the housing for our people be, come to full fruition. So I hope my colleagues will support this motion.
On that amendment, on this co-sponsorship, without any objections ordered, everyone should, on your desk, of course, have the substituted version by the author. So on that motion, is there anyone who would like to speak on it? Senator Tonyana, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. We can just have a short recess, just to go over the substituted version, because the one we were looking at was just the original as introduced. Thank you.
Take a brief recess.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for that quick recess on the motion. I had time to look at the substituted version. It's, thank you. I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. On then the motion then to send 538 to the third reading file, hearing objections, so ordered. Senators, we're going to take a break then, recess, go on recess until 2 o'clock this afternoon. So we are now on recess.